Good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of at Thursday, October 12, 2023. And we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, deliverable, and just as for all.
She's backing a couple of words behind.
Okay, are there ready adjustments to our agenda tonight?
Yes, if the Chair would agree, we don't usually move new business to the front, but Mr. DePrisco has done such a good job with the LAO plan. And he has some things that he needs to attend to this evening and he's here. So instead of having him wait all the way to number eight, would you be okay with moving Mr. DePrisco up right after comments from the public?
Yes.
That would be the first business item for order. And the LAO plan is in the packet.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that.
Anybody have any issue with that?
No.
Here, that way you can head up. Okay.
All right. Any comments from the public? All right then, we'll move right on to Mr. DePrisco then.
All righty. Chad, do you mind if I just kind of set the table for us?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, to bring the board up to speed. So we, last year, we had a student that was an ELL student in second grade with you, correct?
Yeah, right in my room.
Right. And it was a young lady from the country of India. And she was here and we moved forward with developing a ELL plan for her because we have to do that after a certain amount of time. Chad can get into the nuts and bolts of that. So we learned a lot about that and then she moved. So we never really had to pull that plan together. And then I think a relative of hers was in pre-K at the time. And in pre-K, we were told by the state, we don't need to put together an ELL plan for a pre-K student. But we do now that that person is now in kindergarten. And Chad happens to have been working in a class that had to do with this. So he put together a district plan for us, which could be approved by you tonight and then the state will be satisfied. And then he'll run the committee and work, you know, the best we can with this student. Because as you know, we're not rich in ELL population around here. So when that happens, we have to respond to the needs of individuals. So I thought I'd mention that and that's where we are right to date. And Chad's done a great job with that plan and can take it from here.
Yeah, excellent.
I looked it over. It's pretty extensive.
Yes.
I know.
Yeah, so going back towards the summer, I'm working on my master's to be a reading specialist. And one of the courses that we have to take is teaching MLs in the classroom. And when I got into this online course, I started realizing, oh, Little Acton, Maine, seems like we're kind of on the outskirts of what's really going on in the rest of the nation. Even my professor was out of Texas and he had a district of 30 or 40% ELL students. And one of the first assignments they had us do was look at our own population and look for a LAO plan. And there wasn't one. So I got with my professor and I saw kind of what all the coursework was going to be like. And I asked him, hey, can I just work on making a district LAO plan? And that'll be my final project. And he's like, well, if you want to take it on. So I decided to take it on and he kind of helped me piece it together throughout the eight-week course that I did. So what you see in front of you is kind of a combination of three or four districts from State of Maine. I chose a big district, Portland, a smaller district, Berwick, and a couple of other LAO plans that are on the main state website as well. And I started combining what I liked from all of them together and what worked best for Acton. So, and have you guys had a chance to look through it?
Yeah, online.
Online? Yeah, okay. Pretty much, and you might be trying to figure out what LAO stands for. It's not an acronym. It's actually a Supreme Court case back from the 70s. It was LAO versus, I forget what the name was. But it just guarantees the rights for ELL students in every classroom. And from there, there were other Supreme Court cases that kind of backed it up, providing equal access to curriculum. And that's pretty much what our LAO plan will guarantee. So we have to guarantee testing for students within 30 days. After that, we have to get together before the first trimester ends and come up with a Language Acquisition Plan, LEC. There's lots of acronyms in here. That's why I made a page all about it.
That was great.
Uh, yeah, because it gets a little confusing and that's kind of what I discovered as well. MLL, ELL, all of them start kind of running together. So a committee is going to be formed to create a language acquisition plan for that one student. And then it'll be, I kind of gave myself the position. John gave me the blessing. He said, yeah, absolutely. You can run it. So I'll be data tracking. Someone has to do it. So I'm in the trenches with it. So I'm going to be data tracking through the year for this one student and from here on out to see how she is doing. And if we do end up getting any more ELLs in our district, it'll all kind of be under my preview. So that's kind of what it is. It involves a lot of me, Michelle Libby, doing the testing, and guidance counselor, and a few other members from our school. So I'm here to field any questions that you guys might have in here.
So you went through all of these, the questionnaires and everything with this person, or family or whatever, all, I mean, there's a lot of questions here, a lot of information that they need. Is that true? I mean, that's what has to be done?
Yeah, so the first one that you're looking at, that's the newcomer intake form. So we already had one form that was done and Amanda did a great job. She did exactly what she was supposed to as soon as we had an ELL in our school building. She does have to do a language survey with the family to figure out their home language, where they're coming from, do they have any English, what kind of the situation is. So I pulled this one from the state website just because it does pull a lot of information. I'm an info guy. I like having more than not enough.
Sure.
So that one, that one came from the main state website.
But they must have had somebody that had to speak the English language to help this person to translate.
Yeah, they often bring in a family member that knows English to kind of do some translation.
I mean, these questions are just...
They can get pretty intense, absolutely. I also provided some information in here for a great service called the Language Line. It's a paid service. So we can get someone on the phone to do instant communication. And that'll help whenever we do meetings, during parent-teacher conferences, things like that, just so that the parents have equal access to whatever their child is doing here at school. Yeah.
What was she doing, spitting a lot?
That's quite, quite an undertaking that you did here, Chad.
It was a lot of fun, I gotta say. I did a lot of self-learning, diving into a lot of peer-reviewed papers, looking at what best practice looked like for ML instruction. And I was quite new to all of this. So it was a lot of fun diving in.
Because in your, in your bigger systems, you have an English, you have a teacher that's, that deals with second language.
An ESOL teacher, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And we don't quite have that.
Right, but for one student in our population, probably isn't going to be very large in the foreseeable future anyway for that.
Exactly. And the State of Maine is very flexible with it as well. They, they well know that a lot of districts don't have ESOL teachers. So they're giving us a lot of flexibility on giving support to those students, such as like support through Zoom. So we could set up like an hour or two of Zoom for that student for a day. We can look at getting teachers certified. I can look at getting myself certified and we'd be covered in that sense too. So a lot of different ways that we can get covered. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any?
So I, I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question, Judy.
Okay.
It's Mary. Um, you know how we collaborate? Yeah, we collaborate with Sanford. Is there any way we could collaborate with Sanford on this?
Definitely. It kind of depends too on what the language situation is. So if they have other students in that district with similar language needs, then we could probably look at grouping in some fashion.
Of the same age.
Yeah, same age, exactly.
Age, lower elementary.
Yep.
We could definitely look into that, Mary.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Lot of work.
Well, thank you for taking this on and...
I would recommend that this be a vote to accept the plan because we can insert any student into this plan. It's, it's a plan, not for each, it is for each student and it will be for a student. But for future students, one of the questions I get yearly for Chapter 125, I think it is school approval, are certain things in place.
Yeah.
The question will be, is there an ELL plan in place? Well, we never needed one before. So if you vote to approve this, this will be our standard plan that we use for any student who comes to Acton.
It gives us about three years to see what really works and what needs to be changed as well. So at the end of three, we can look at it again, make any changes, and keep moving forward.
So you've gone over all of this with, you mentioned Michelle Libby and guidance, guidance? And everybody thinks, okay.
Especially Michelle. She's awesome. She's looking, she can do all of our intake assessments and annual assessments at the end of the year.
Okay, great.
She's more than happy to take it on.
To all look for a motion and to accept this district LAO plan that Chad has presented tonight for the Acton School Department.
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved by CJ, seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for looking at it and giving feedback. I appreciate it.
Great job, Mr. D. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
And that's going to advance you and your education too, right?
It sure is. Yeah. I wanted to give back to the school and the school is actually paying for these courses. So my little way of giving back.
Yeah, good, good for you.
We'll keep it going.
Yeah, good for you. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Chad, do you need the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move on to number three, which is Celebration of Learning Summer School with Patty.
Oh, can she see?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you see?
You see it now?
Jose? Jose, can you see?
So I just put together a quick little slideshow to, to kind of give you an idea of what we did at summer programming. So we had 37 students attending this year. On that, we had 77% attendance rate. But when you have a child who's gone for a week with a parent or a family for vacation, it, it impacts that. But we also had 15 who missed only two days or less. And five were here every single day.
That's great.
So I was super excited about the attendance. And I want you all to know that I could not have done any of this without the amazing teachers who worked with, with the kids this summer. So we had Mr. D., Ms. LaZott, Ms. Goodwin, Mrs. LeClaire. We had Mrs. Holland as an ed tech. We had Ms. Howes as an ed tech. And we had, uh...
Suwani?
Oh, we had Mrs. Audi and we had Mrs. Corey. So we had a bunch of people. And Michelle was here too. So we, you know, we had a bunch of people here who really, you know, stepped up and did everything that needed to be done to help these kids. So we had different themes this year than usual, which was kind of fun. And Jen pulled library books so that we had a read-aloud each day that coincided with the theme of that week. So we also did our STEM project. So with jungle, it was hard to find a STEM project. So they made habitat paintings that week on Thursday. With the trees, they made bird feeders out of containers that were found around the house. And these things are the kinds of things that we would do in our PLTW science. So it was, here are your materials. And then they create with very little help from adults, except for thoughtful questions if they got stuck. So for the Olympics, we did things around the different events they have. So they made Olympic medals with clay and painted them. And they added a symbol on that to represent the event of their choice. And with the zoo one, I found these challenge cards online that were so cute that they had to take a card, they, and they had these, we got them, the animals, the toy animals. And they had to do whatever the card said. One of them, they had to create an enclosure with a doorway tall enough for a giraffe to go through. One of them had to have a habitat that a gorilla would be able to climb around in. So that, that meant taking the gorilla that they had and seeing if whatever they built would support the weight of that. And there were several other things. So it was really a lot of fun to watch the kids do those. And our daily schedule started with a greeting, expectations for the day, a read-aloud. Every week, we had a mystery box, which is something that Lori Lodge started and the kids love it. And everything in the mystery box was something out of one of the read-alouts that week. So they would listen and see if they could figure out what was in the box. Monday through Wednesday, from nine to 10, we had ELA with writing prompts based on the read-aloud, independent reading, word work, and their iReady pathway. Then we had recess and a snack break. And then we'd have an hour of math with skills review, word problems, games, and iReady pathway. And I worked with the seventh graders. And they even were on board with, with doing this because Mrs. Audi would take them for the reading piece and I kept them for the math. So it was, it was a good, it was a good team. Oops. And on Thursdays, we would gather in the morning, have a read-aloud and reveal the mystery box. And we shortened ELA and math so that we could do our STEM activity. So it was fast-paced. It was engaging. The days went really quickly. So here are some other kids down in the lower end while they were working on one of their STEM activities. They wanted to do it inside instead of outside because it was a little bit warm on some days. And then these, this was where they were doing their zoo activity, where they're building whatever they had to build to go with the animals that they were, that they had chosen. So there's, there's Mia. She's showing her giraffe. Her structure was tall enough for her giraffe to go through and she was super proud of that. So that is, that is summer programming this year in a nutshell. And they really, they had a great time, you know. Lisa Gore drove the bus. She was amazing every day. And it was a long bus route. So, so we're looking forward to next year. I've already, you know, had people say that they would be willing to come and do it again. So if there are no questions...
Mary, are you still there?
I'm still here. I can see the slides.
Okay, you can see them?
Oh, good. Yeah.
Yeah, good. Yeah, I think it's, it's great when you see kids that are learning and catching up on their skills and having a good time at the same time. That's, that's the, you know, the key to the summer program is, if you want, you know.
Yeah.
For them to want to come, to have a lot of people, to have a good attendance all summer. That shows that...
Yeah, and I was, I was really excited about that. And I just did the, the review. You have to do a review with the state because we have a grant for this program. So I just got that into them and that was, that was pretty satisfying to be able to report out what we were doing.
Good.
And they're really interested in what works and what doesn't work. So they had some good feedback.
Good. Thank you, Patty, very much. Now we're going to go, we're going to stick with you for progress monitoring.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Don't get dizzy.
It was nice to see Patty.
Yeah, don't get dizzy.
So I decided this year, we've already done the diagnostic. Oh, and before I forget, we, I only have 12 kids to do final finishing of testing for the main three-year. So, and that, we have our RIT scores for the spring finally. We do not have the summative from the state yet. But we have, we will have a more immediate response to the testing. We have 24-hour wait for RIT scores from this testing this fall. And they promised that it would not be long again in the spring like it was this past year. They just had to calibrate everything. So these are the diagnostics that the kids did. And I decided to take spring of 2023 and fall of 2023. So this is, this will be the same group from the spring to the fall. So there's no, was no available information for kindergarten, of course, because they were in pre-K. But this fall, the math scores for kindergarten look like this. You have most of them in what they call one grade below, which is exactly where you would expect them to be at this time of year. We had this conversation last year. We want to see the yellow and green because what they're learning this year is going to progress them to be on grade level. So that's one kindergarten. This is the second. They're both looking really good. And nobody below grade, below grade level beyond that one, that one grade. Yeah. So this is the first, I could get spring information for first grade. This is where they, they ended, which is pretty impressive, where you had all of them either early on grade level or mid and above grade level in the spring. That would have been the end of kindergarten. So when you look at them in the fall, the bulk of them are where they need to be, one grade below or on. And then we have three that are struggling somewhat. And that's to be expected too. Those are the ones that when you look at your prerequisites for each unit, they're the ones you focus on. And we just got done a PD where we spent some time with a consultant from iReady and how to really use those prerequisites. And before I forget, the four students in gray up above from the spring are four that we did not have. So we now have them in this class. And if they dig down, they might find that the three that are in red are of that group or not. So they'll use their prerequisites to see what they need. This is the other second grade, other first grade from kindergarten into first. So all in yellow and green. Here's your second grade. We have all in yellow this fall, except for the one. And that's one that the second grade teachers will watch. So the other second grade has a few more challenges. And that will be a focus also, not a concern. This is second into third. So Mrs. Goodwin, or Ms. Goodwin, will obviously watch the nine who are in the red especially, so that she'll know. But also, there are four new students in there and that is a class of 25. This is fourth grade. This is a class, oh, Megan's is 24. I'm sorry. This is a class of 25. So lots of, lots of eyes on third and fourth because they are large classes this year. This is fifth grade. So everyone is looking really good with a minimal number in the red and those being the focus to make sure that we can bring them up. Here's our sixth grade. And they put, sixth was all together in one of the groupings. So I took them as a group, even though we have two separate sixth grades. So this is a whole bunch from spring to fall. So lots of good progress in sixth grade also. Here's seventh and eighth, and they were all lumped under Mrs. LeVassar. So she has 30 of her kids who are in the red. But she is also a very dynamic teacher who is totally embracing this program. And I spend a lot of time in her room. She's doing a fabulous job. I'm super excited for these kids. I think that they, that we are going to see a lot of the red diminished by the end of the year. So before I go into reading, are there any math questions here? No? Okay. So for reading, this is the first year of full implementation of Ready Reading. So I only put their fall scores because I didn't feel like it would be accurate to try and pull from last year. So this is kindergarten, looking amazing. This is first grade, also looking amazing. And I really think that a lot of this is a combination of Ready Reading and the jolly phonics that they do. This is second grade, also doing fabulous, only a little tiny bit of red there. Reading is looking really good. Third grade is where we have a heavy presence of Title I scheduled in this year because statistically, third grade is a very important year and one in which we really need to get them right where they need to be. So there's a heavy presence of Title I in third grade this year, Schedule I's, and a heavy presence also in fourth grade. So we had already looked, when we created the Title I schedule, we had already looked at prior data so that we would know where our biggest challenges are and our biggest grades. So this is fifth grade. So three, four, and five, we have, we have some red, but not, but they, but they also have a heavy presence of the Title I support. And that is as far as I went because six, seven, and eight are not doing the Ready Reading. They have a different program that they're using, one that was established with book groups and things already that works very well for them. And third and fourth grade teachers are actually doing an upgraded model of Ready Reading and it's magnetic reading. And the, the, both of the teachers love it. They went to Newcastle for some training and the kids are responding. So I'm excited to be able to show you in the spring what everything looks like because I have, I have a lot of, lot of faith that things are going to be amazing.
Great.
So that is reading in a nutshell.
Any questions?
No.
Sounds like things are going the way they're supposed to go.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I'm excited.
I'm excited to be able to see the, on the charts, see the progress and see how many of these, like two or three over here, but the rest of the classes, either above or...
Unit by unit, the way this program breaks things down, these teachers know exactly who has it already, who needs just a little bit of extra help, where you can start going and, and then give them that little nudge. And then kids who really need that extra help where, where you can do your lesson and not have to stop everything because once your lessons are done, then you use your rest of your days that week to do small groupings. And they know what skills to do them in. So everything is laid out.
Good. Any questions or comments for Patty?
Thank you for all that work.
Do a great job with this, Patty.
Yeah. I love the program. It's easy, easy to do.
All right then, we'll move on to number five, which is the consent agenda. And I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. CJ, she spoke.
CJ and Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll start with... All right, so we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Two quick things. The thanks to Patty, the main three-year assessment is this week. And the final testing was today. And tomorrow will be any makeups that need to be done. And we hope that that'll take care of everything for the fall. And she's super organized, and Patty does a great job with this. And everybody was pretty relaxed, and it didn't really have any glitches. And also, we won't be meeting again until November. I just wanted to make sure the public knows that trunk retreat will be on Saturday, the 28th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. here at school. We hope for great weather. Last year was phenomenal. And even if we don't get great weather, we've had success moving it inside, too. So I hope a lot of people participate.
Anybody have any questions for any of the other parts of John's report?
The after-school program is going to start in November. Are we looking at November now?
Yeah, so Mary Waterhouse, who presented last week, last month, did a great job. She's meeting with me at 11:15 tomorrow to go over some things in regards to physical plans. She wants to get reacquainted with the CAF and any supply area. And I know for sure it's not going to happen in October. So we're probably moving it out to looking at November.
So she got everything she needed from the state?
She got everything she needed from us, the insurance piece and the letter from me to the state. And now I think it's just a matter of details. And I think, I'm guessing, she's probably looking at her numbers, too, to see how many are interested.
Any other questions for John? How about questions for any of the other reports?
Do we know what happened with Blackboard? Because it seemed to be working fine last year. And then something over the summer, was it over the summer that it just went?
Yeah, technology changed for security. A lot of people are really pushing for more security, more privacy, more encryption. So the encryption level's increased. And the way we pull data from Blackboard is going to be end-of-life soon. And they're working on strategies and ways to fix that. But it's kind of a struggle making the connections work. And even though the connections are working now, we aren't pulling everything we could potentially for data from people for contacts. And we're also limited on like how many characters can be in text messages and how groups can be organized, like sports groups or Lego robotics groups or anything like that. So looking to expand our abilities to connect with more people and organize our communication better.
Okay, great.
Under new business, Mike's going to give us a little more about what our options are.
I missed that.
Yeah, that's okay. It's under new business.
And for Paula, the audit is completed?
There's... I've been working with them this week. And we've done a lot yesterday and today. And I spoke with Michelle, who is our audit manager. And she's hoping to get it wrapped up within the next, I would say, at least a couple of weeks.
Anything else under this? All right, then let's move on to number seven, committee reports. And it looks like the policy committee's been busy.
Well, we had two months of stuff to do. Because we had... We met after our full meeting in September. So we had September policies and October policies. So truancy JHB is a complete replacement because Paula went to workshop, a seminar, where this is kind of new stuff from German and Woodson. So it's a complete replacement of what we had before. And homework is also a whole replacement of the previous IKB. Made a couple of adjustments to the animals in the schools. And, yep, and then just small updates to the dress code and the medication on field trips. Nothing super crazy.
So none of these are really new policies. They're all revised or replacements, correct?
Yes. None are net new.
They've been there a long time.
So anybody got any questions or comments about any of these policies? Anything from up north?
Well, we actually got hailed on. But anyway, besides that.
Waterborne?
I like the homework policy. I hadn't seen it before, so I like that.
Yeah, that's a complete change, really, compared to the old one we had. This is much better, the new one.
I like it. And really, not much with the school, it looks like, just name change.
Name changes. And we kind of tweaked I a little bit and added J to kind of differentiate between students specifically who might need them for their IEPs. And then anyone else, either, I guess, it could be staff, it could be parents, it could be visitors to the building.
So then I'll look for a motion to accept policies, JHB truancy, IKB homework, IMG, animals in the school, JFCA dress code, and JLCD medication on trips. I'll look for those to be approved as revised.
Still moved? Target.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, let's see. Anything from the long-range planning committee?
We didn't meet.
Okay. Then we will move on to number eight, which is new business. And we've already done child plans, and we'll skip that. And we'll go right on to remote snow day meals.
Sure, so remote snow day meals. David, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. We can't see you, but we can hear you. So you are with us tonight, thank you.
You want to see me? I'm in the car.
That's okay. We can hear you.
No, it's okay.
Hey, David, you just ran a light. How about you shut that off?
No, no problem.
We should leave. We did just have a little mini fender bender, so I'm glad that's over. Somebody just bumped into me in the parking lot.
Oh, no.
David, I'll...
I'm good to go. My wife's driving now, so. How are you all? Glad to have you. I'm here for your questions.
I'll tell you what, David, let me just kind of set the table on what this is for the school committee to remind them what we did a few years ago. And then we can discuss the benefits of this year if we choose to do this. So remote snow day meals, remote meals came about as part of the pandemic. And, you know, we had to find a way of making sure that people could come get lunches. And you remember those days. And then after that, I think it was the following year, the staff and I got together, we talked, you know, why don't we try to do, I think we did two snow days that would be remote, and the rest would be days off. And the last time we did it, we hadn't had a vote on this. And we had a snow day in November, and we didn't get the meals out until December. So the first real snow day we had was a real snow day. It would be my recommendation, after just doing a quick straw poll with the staff on ERD a week ago Wednesday, hey, would you guys like to revisit this? Because some school districts are doing it, but there's a cost. So I asked David to kind of cost this out for us and kind of weigh out the benefits of having a remote snow day. My recommendation, again, would be two. And if we have two, there'll be two remote snow days. If we have six, there'll be two and four stay-home regular that will make up at the end of the calendar. So it'd be very much similar, it'd be very similar to what we did before. Like I said before, there is a cost. And David and I have not talked about really the shelf-stable meals and pickup and the details. And David, I'm assuming, when you, you know, it's, I'll turn it right over to you, that perhaps shelf-stable meals are part of this process? Or are we looking at something different if we go down this road?
No, yeah, we would have to look at shelf-stable meals, the unpredictability of when the event's going to happen. And we have to have that meal ready to go. If we didn't do shelf-stable, we would have to look at freezer item of meals, which can be done, too. But I think that might be a little more challenging with our staff having to get those meals ready to go.
Okay, very good. And we did the shelf-stable meals before, and I actually still have one from that period of time that I could show you. I guess my next question would be, just to kind of frame this up for the school committee, if the vote is yes tonight after we talk about the financials, what kind of landing strip do you need on this to get everything ready before snow comes? I know it's only October, but we have had snow days in November before.
Yeah, and I can put an order in next week. I can put an order in tomorrow and have the product on hand within a week.
Let me pull over again.
All right. So did you want me to go to a little bit on the cost side of things?
That would...
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
So some of these items are a little more costly. But the strategy would be to buy items that we did if we did not need to use them. Because I do have to buy in book. I'm buying from a vendor like Cisco. So I won't be buying things, you know, 25 to 50 servings or in a case. So the initial cost of this quick price out is $150 to $200 just for the product. And we could go ahead and use that product as reimbursable meals if we were to use them. If we were, if I'm strategic and I buy products that I can roll right into my menu. Talking to Bean, the last time we did this, I think we sold like two or three remote meals. So I think the short of it is, the cost will be very minimal. I can also claim reimbursement for these meals if I apply for a waiver. But I'm apt not to do that if we only have a handful of meals and could either absorb the cost. Or other directors have said to me, they're looking at about a $5 a meal charge to the district. They look to charge because you can also give meals that are non-reimbursable, meaning we can just basically give a meal that we want to give. It doesn't have to be a meal pattern. So it would cost less and be easier to procure, and that's another option. But the upfront cost is about $150 to $250, I'd say, dollars for the product. But like I said, if I'm strategic, I could go ahead and use that product. And at the end of the day, it's going to be a pretty negligible cost in the district.
Is that price you just gave us per snow day, breakfast and lunch?
So I would have to buy enough product to do two snow days. So, yeah, that price would cover two snow days.
Cover two snow days.
It would be about $150 to $250 for the two snow days.
For how many kids?
And that's another great point.
Yes.
Do a handful, but I have to plan for more. So the numbers I plan for are those kids that qualify for free and reduced price. My quick numbers on that, I just rounded it up to about 50 servings. I can do 50 two-day snow days with this order I have in mind for $150 to $250. Shelf-stable items like soy milk, nacho cheese cups. Salsa would be our vegetable and stuff like that. Things that I can also roll that in to the program and have that be reimbursed to the state, meaning we get our money back. So again, all in all, the costs will be negligible. It will be an upfront cost. But again, I will find a way to use those products in the menu.
Great.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, my question isn't for David, it's kind of more for you. I think, because we had done this two years. And then we didn't do it last year. And I think it, I think I remember, and I don't, yeah, getting old. But I think I remember you saying that the state wouldn't let us do it last year. Did I make that up? Or was I missing something?
No, it was a situation where we didn't even attempt to do it. And we weren't sure if meals were going to be free again last year when we had the discussion. And then I did notice that when some schools, some schools did go remote. So when I saw that, like when the first snow started, like we didn't get snow until like close to February that year. And then we got a bunch. I called the council superintendent's, and I'm like, what's this costing you? And they used terms like $3,000. Well, that's because they must have you, you know, much bigger districts. And I'm like, that's, I wouldn't even bring that to you at $3,000. But then I realized that it had to do with the number of students. And working with David, that was one of the first things I asked him when we started talking about. And what I was going to mention, and this kind of falls into what you were asking, what you were mentioning. David, last time we did this, there was probably a dozen meals that went out the door. You know, maybe 12, not many at all.
But that was in one snow day.
Yes. Yes. So my other...
And that line, the numbers I've been hearing from other directors are about it, your size.
Okay, that sounds great. The other one is, and we can get into the details just you and I later, but I wanted the school board to kind of understand the process. Would this be something, David, that we would ask parents kind of net soon if we get the approval? If we did this, would you be interested? And that kind of gives us a general number. Is that something we should do, or do we just make some assumptions here?
Gathering that information couldn't hurt. I don't know if it's necessary. If you want to do that legwork, you can. But I really think we're going to be looking at low numbers. And, you know, I'm not that concerned of the cost when we're looking at a dozen meals, maybe twice in a year.
Yeah, 200 sounds quite a bit different from 3,000.
In a little bit of a related to this note, do we still do the backpack program for kids that need it? How many do we have there, do you know?
I'd have to ask our social worker. I don't know our current number on that. That's a, I can have access to the numbers.
Because those would ideally be guaranteed ones that go home, right?
Yeah, but that's, yes, but it's also, it's food, but it's different than our...
No, I know it's different, but as far as, as far as the snow day meals, that kind of would be like a definitely...
Those number probably wouldn't want them. So at least we probably count on that number.
Right, right, right. So that'd kind of be your minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A couple of years ago, when I came off of PTG, they were down to three. But that was, you know...
Yeah, you know, it can always fluctuate.
Yeah, and I think at the beginning of that year, it had been seven, I think, and had dropped to three.
Backpacks?
Yeah.
We're kind of guessing here without Christie. It's not a lot.
I think PTG would be able to have that number pretty easily. They don't know who, but they know how many.
I mean, I think if we can do this for two days at $200, you know, to feed up to 50 kids, that's a great thing to be able to offer. And hopefully, the parents that, you know, get the free and reduced lunch would be willing to take the food.
That qualify for it.
Yeah.
Because everybody gets free now.
Right, right.
But the ones that would qualify for it.
The guideline, yeah, that normally would qualify, yeah.
So this isn't anything we have to vote on, is it?
No, just know that we'd be expending the money. I need to definitely get your approval because there's a financial aspect to it. David did a great job kind of explaining what the parameters of those funds are. And if you're fine with that, then I'll move forward with it.
All right, well, let's look for a motion to provide remote snow day meals for two days during the school year.
Still moved?
Second.
Amanda and CJ. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. I think we can probably let David. David, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you all. I appreciate the time. And anytime you have any questions, don't hesitate to bring me on as well. Take care.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 8-3, Alice Safety Forum for the Community.
Yeah, that's mine. So I spoke with Joe Jordain, our Alice trainer at Sanford PD. And he and I have been, since last year, been talking about, once we get our kind of game down with Alice, we should really do a forum with the community. So what we've done is we've picked a night when he's available, which would be Thursday, November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, November 3rd, 6:00 p.m. I envisioned this in the gym. And Daniel, we'd love it if the select board and anybody at town wanted to come hear what we've been doing because it's about... because it's about safety, about, you know, the, the kids in the community. And then Joe and I will, will speak, we'll, we'll give a balance of what we do and, you know, how we do it in, in a way that really works for parents to understand that we're taking this very seriously. And some of the safety upgrades that Andy and I have done here and, you know, the whole thing. And then we can definitely do after we have a PowerPoint. Joe's real good at this. Staff's very familiar with Joe, very comfortable with him. I know the community will be. He's very personable. We'll do like a Q and A and answer everything we can. Once that's done, I need to have that community forum so moms and dads and grandparents and guardians know what it is we're doing. Because after that, Joe and I are going to plan and then work with the staff what drills might look like. Because drills aren't going to be just hide in the corner, be quiet, shut up. It might be, that might be the first thing to do, which is alert. We'll alert into our regular shelter-in-place. But then a drill could be, it really could be using our emergency radios. A drill could be, okay, at this time over the radio, I'd like everybody in the elementary wing to please now head off to the rally point in a very orderly manner. And kids get used to just leaving like a fire drill and what an orderly manner it looks like. And, you know, we probably won't do any real heightened alert things that get scary. But get kids to know that sheltering in place is one, one aspect. You know, it's one methodology. Another methodology is get up, down. So let's practice orderly, getting up to where we need to be. And then we can kind of take it from there and figure out where we need more training with the kids. And then age-appropriate, what we do with our four-year-olds might look a lot different with what we do with our 14-year-olds. Once I have the forum, we can move. Because I don't want to do that first and then have kids go home and go, oh, yes, Mr. Ross told us all to leave. And well, just kind of laughed. I'm going to get a lot of emails on that. I thought I'd probably get to the parents first and then we can start practicing with the kids. So that's the date, that's the time that worked for Joe. And I booked the gym for us for that evening.
Is it November the 2nd?
I have, uh-
Third.
No, but the, the 2nd is the Thursday. The 3rd is a Friday.
It's the 2nd, as I said, 3rd. And then I wrote 2nd.
The 2nd?
Let me just-
The 2nd, 2nd.
We also have, let me make sure. I'm going to look at this calendar because this has everything in it. Yeah, so it is Thursday, the 2nd. I also have us as a 3:00 p.m. Culture and Climate Committee. Do you have that as well?
I do.
So that kind of works out for us for those of you that are, you know, able to give that time. We'll do our, our CNC meeting. And then as that kind of ends, I'll just prep up for our 6 o'clock forum with parents. It'll all be the same afternoon. The afternoon, Thursday, the 2nd, that is correct. I said the 3rd, I wrote the 2nd. And that's it for the, just to bring, bring that up. I'll start getting to the community with information as soon as Joe and I have a chance to put together like a little flyer or something like that. We still got plenty of time to do that.
Okay, great. All right, then, let's move on to eight-four. And we'll turn it back over to Mike.
As I explained, Blackboard has been failing to gather all of the contacts from our SIS campus. So, and I've been struggling to keep the systems communicating well together. So to try to remedy this, I've reached out to vendors and have found a better product that will allow for more contacts if you pull per household, per student. And also give us the ability to do the things I had mentioned earlier, to create organizations or groups better for sports or after-school activities. And also doesn't limit us to characters in a text message or an email. So I'm recommending we move forward with this. I hope they proposed a quote to us. It's under the amount needed to go up the bid. And they also gave us a three-month trial. So we can try it for three months, see how the system works, make sure it's working to our, our liking. I've already spoke with them today to get the ball rolling. They'll give us our own portal. We'll customize it with our logo and our, our colors. And then we'll start training and getting the data over. So we'll work with Amanda and the trainer to start process, the process of creating groups and creating messages and templates like snow days or evacuations or alerts. So the ball's already rolling with that. And it's already in the budget too. So we can move forward and with this process and eliminate the headache of that I'm receiving and parents are receiving, I'm not getting enough communication.
What's the name of this program, Mike?
Regroup.
Regrots?
Are there other schools around here that use it, or?
There are other schools that use it. I just watched a thread about other schools and the communication systems they use. Most of them use products that tie into their website. So it's a huge package. And I looked at those as well and saw if they could like just piece out the communication piece because it's all that they need. But Regroup is more of just a communication tool used at a district level or a school level. And then we can incorporate other people, not just Amanda, who does most of the communication. But we can have our athletic director or anybody who manages after-school activities as well. But there are some other schools that are using Regroup in, in the state. I don't have any off the top of my head.
No, that's fine.
So reach out and find any. The portal looks pretty simple, really clean. And the fact that you're using modern technologies to make the connections with our SIS that are more secure and encrypted to keep our data safe is definitely a, a bonus in the highlight to the resources that Panthoff are.
I think you called them templates, but we could have like a remote snow day pre-written for the date. We could have a regular snow day pre-written for the date.
Right.
And can we do the same with security alerts? Meaning if we did go into any kind of a lockdown, we could explain what it was or what's happening?
Yes.
Give enough information to say, don't come to the school, more information forthcoming to a, you know, a, a pickup center, which we have a plan for, okay?